The Lee County Board of Commissioners will come to order. The invocation will be given this afternoon by Mr. Hoyle, followed by a pledge of allegiance. We ask you to join us at this time.
Bow our heads. Our gracious heavenly Father, you have given us the gift of another day, and we ask that you allow us to use it and use it wisely and well. Our gracious heavenly Father, we ask you to look with your blessing upon the members of the Board of our Commissioners, guide them in their deliberations on this occasion, and may their actions and thoughts and deeds and actions be pleasing and acceptable to you. We note, our Father, that before we meet again, we will observe the anniversary of our declaration of our independence as a nation. We ask that those present remember with appreciation the risk and sacrifice that our forefathers made, and also the efforts of the intervening governments to sustain and preserve that freedom. We ask, our Father, that you strengthen those in positions of authority in our country at all levels of government, that they may preserve the freedom we freely accept and keep it so that we pass it on to succeeding generations, the same gift that we receive. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, neutralized with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you all this afternoon. It's very toasty afternoon, and we have quite a crowd here. I'd like to mention before we get into the agenda, the first part of the program or agenda will be a joint public hearing with the Lee County Planning Board. We'll go through that presentation and that public hearing, and then the people who are involved with the planning committee will leave this room, and we'll give them a couple of minutes to vacate and go over to the Wicker Room where they will continue their discussions and deliberations. So it will ease just a little, I believe. So I'd like to call on Althea Thompson at this time to make a presentation to us which will allow us to move into a public hearing. Ms. Thompson.
Good afternoon, Chairman Hayes, Board of Commissioners. We have received an application from Mr. Stephen Stroud, Triassic LLC, Linda Wicker, Jimmy Thomas, Holbert, and Sandra Wicker. They have made an application to rezone 491 acres of land, which is comprised of 19 tracts of property located in the Deep River community. The tracts are located north to northeast of Colon Road, east of Deep River Road, south of Zion Church Road, and west and east of US Highway 1. They are proposing to rezone these properties from residential agricultural to light industrial and general commercial. Combined, the properties provide over 2,400 feet of road frontage on Colon Road. Included in this request are three tracts of land with single-family homes, and they are located at 4416, 4564, and 4616 Colon Road. The remainder of the subject tracts are vacant. At the present time, the tracts appear to be wooded to light wooded with several farm fields. A 100-foot power line easement to Progress Energy runs through the northernmost portion of tracts. Again, the existing properties are zoned residential agricultural, and all of the properties surrounding the subject tracts are zoned residential agricultural. South of Colon Road and then south of the subject tracts is a 69-acre tract of land that is zoned highway commercial. The land usage in the area of this rezoning is residential uses, and again, they consist of low-density, single-family dwellings, farmland, and woodlands. Future land uses in this area includes commercial and industrial uses due to the planned expansion of the Lee County Industrial Park. This park is planned north, from its existing state, north to Colon Road. A driveway entrance onto Colon Road has already been put in place in anticipation of this park expansion. The existing land use pattern is expected to change due to the development of this existing commercial properties and the expansion of the park. The applicants have assembled their properties for the purpose of a future development. They are requesting to rezone 431-plus acres to light industrial and over 6 acres, 60 acres of land to general commercial. If rezoned, the residential homes on the lot will become non-conforming. The existing residential agricultural district is established for very low-density residential home sites and agricultural uses. The general commercial district that is being requested is established to provide areas for general commercial activities designed to serve the community, such as shopping centers, repair shops, wholesale businesses, and retail sales with limited outdoor display of goods and limited outdoor operations. The C2 zone should be located on or within proximity to a major fair fair. The light industrial district, which is the bulk of the land that they're proposing to rezone, is a district that is established to provide for areas that contain a mix of light manufacturing uses, office park, unlimited retail and service uses that serve the industrial areas in an attractive business park setting with proper screening and buffering, all being compatible with the adjoining uses. Light industrial districts should include areas which include the orderly development and concentration of light industrial uses. Again, light industrial zones should also be within proximity to a major fair fair. Utilities in this area include existing public water, which is accessible by means of a 12-inch water line in the right of way of Colon Road. Public sewer is available in the area. There is a lift station that has been installed northeast of US 1 and Colon Road to facilitate the planned expansion of the Lee County Industrial Park. The applicants are required to coordinate with the City Public Works Department if they wish to connect to these public utilities. The emergency response will include the Deep River Fire District, covers this area. The Deep River Rural Fire Department is located on Deep River Road. Also, the Deep River Rural Fire Department have plans to build a substation on Lower Moncur Road, which will also provide additional coverage to this area. Transportation includes the North Carolina Department of Transportation 2000 Annual Daily Traffic Study, which reports 2,600 vehicle trips per day on Colon Road near the subject property. The Sanford Fair Fair Plan states that Colon Road serves the industrial areas of the northeast section of Sanford, and it also provides an alternative route from US 1 and Hawkins Avenue. Local road projects submitted to NC DOT currently includes a request for funding for the widening of Colon Road from Osgood Road to Deep River Road in order to support the continued development of the Lee County Industrial Park. Environmental issues at this site includes a small area of floodplain on the southeast corner of the parcel, which is east of US 1. None of the other tracts appear to have any floodplain. The property is located within the Cape Fear watershed, and all non-residential development must comply with the development limits and standards of this watershed. If this property is rezoned, all uses in the general commercial and light industrial districts will be allowed, and any future development of the property will be required to meet current development standards of the unified development ordinance. The 2020 Land Use Plan encourages the community to permit commercial and retail establishments, provided that proper buffering and design is furnished as needed, and that traffic generated does not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. The 2020 Land Use Plan identifies the area at the interchange of Colon Road and US 1 as being within a highway node. The highway node classification allows major mixed-use areas of retail, service centers, office, and business parks. The plan also notes that there is some low-mid-density residential in this area, and of course, that is designed for single-family duplexes and townhomes. This property is also located within the Deep River Small Area Plan, and that plan pretty much concurs with the 2020 Land Use Plan. Res zoning this property from residential to commercial and light industrial would conform to the Deep River Plan and the 2020 Land Use Plan.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners or from the Planning Board at this time? Thank you very much. Very comprehensive presentation. Since there are no questions, I'm going to go ahead and declare that we are in public hearing mode, and I would invite people who wish to speak on behalf of the approval of this consideration to come forward, and then I'll ask those who would oppose it to come forward. So we are now in public session, and if you, anyone who wishes to speak in favor, please identify yourself, and we'd appreciate it if you'd keep your remarks to approximately three minutes or so. And if there are groups who might wish to have one spokesman, that would be fine as well. We want to accommodate everyone who wishes to be heard. So, sir.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and participate in this public hearing. I'm speaking here from, I guess, a personal standpoint, but first from Lee County Economic Development Corporation.
Your name, please.
My name, Bob Hughes, 1710 Lindwood Circle here in Sanford. We first heard about the possibility of some land being put together off of US 1 towards the end of last year. Had a chance to talk with Mr. Stroud and talk about the possibilities of development in the area right around US 1, the Colon Road intersection. We knew, and he knew, that the county, about 10 years ago, had put a lift station in there that had some pretty good capacity and really would open up about 1,600 acres of land, including the land that we're looking at today. You've got pieces of the infrastructure in place, you've got water lines along Colon Road, a pretty good-sized elevated storage tank right there, but most of all, you've got a US 1 corridor. And when companies are looking for new locations, really for the last four or five years, the number-one criteria has been what's the accessibility like? You come right out of this property onto Colon Road, a couple hundred feet, and you're on US 1, and that's probably the best driver out there for development in that area. Like all of you know, we do have an industrial park, a proposed industrial park in that area that is also a zone just south of this area for light industrial. So it's a developer's dream to hear about the possibility of a private developer coming in and putting some properties together that could be used for industrial development. So from Lee County Economic Development Corporation, we passed a resolution back in February last of this year where we talked about, Lee County has a limited number of shelter rating industrial sites available for economic development projects. We also know that US 1 is a primary corridor connecting Lee County to the Greater Triangle area, which is where the greatest energy comes from for development. We also know that the Oscar Color Bypass and the 540 Toll Road, two important pieces of infrastructure that provide enhanced accessibility, will be completed by 2012. And it really offers great opportunities to move people, products, and services between Greensboro, Fayetteville, and the greater Raleigh-Mentor area. We know we've got available water and sewer capacity. They put together a large chunk of land. At that time, we thought it was about 520 acres. I think it's actually a little bit less than that according to the rezoning. And that they intend, Triassic intends to develop this for industrial sites, which is primarily what we're interested in. We need more options, frankly, and I've talked to all of the Commissioners here from time to time about having more options out there. In this case, we do have someone else that's coming in, interested in doing this kind of thing. Again, it's a developer's dream. So the corporation hereby supports the rezoning of Triassic properties to light industrial, and at that time, we said highway business, but it's a commercial district, and further proposes to send this recommendation to the Lee County Board of Commissioners and the respective Planning Board. So I think.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There were two people who signed up to speak, and the form that I have in front of me is a form that's used for just a sort of spontaneous three-minute comments to the Commissioners. But these two people, Mandy Moss and Hubert Wall, I think, wish to speak about this particular issue this afternoon, so I wanted to just recognize them, and I'm sure they're in the queue, ready to speak. And sir, you're the next speaker. You're speaking in favor of, is that correct? All right, if you'd identify yourself and your address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Tony Tate. I'm a landscape architect and land planner in Durham at 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. Happy to be here before tonight. Ms. Thompson and Mr. Hughes did a wonderful job explaining the property and all of the attributes that it has. The map that I'm showing before you is just, it's very similar to this map, but it does have the advantage of topographic lines on it, so you can see that the majority of that land is very well-suited for development. There are very few environmental issues associated with it. The floodplain is located across the road and just affects one small portion. There's a small pond located on the property that, you know, doesn't really affect the development that much. It's a fairly small pond. It is located on and directly adjacent to US Highway 1, which makes it a wonderful piece to get companies in and out of the triangle and back down to Sanford, so that is also a wonderful attribute for it to have. We are in compliance with the 2020 Plan and the Small Area Plan, and we feel like this rezoning is appropriate for the area, and it's unique to have such a large assemblage of land that has the quality of transportation and little environmental effect associated with it. So I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have, and just ask for your support in this request.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Continuing to ask for those of you who would wish to speak in favor, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone else to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Okay, let's ask for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to it, if you would come forward and give us your name and address.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Mandy Moss. I live at 299 Perry Pond Road, which is adjacent to the tract being voted on. Let me make it clear why we chose to build on Perry Pond Road: for peace and quiet, to be surrounded by nature. We can sit on our porch and watch birds chirp, deer and rabbits play, trees bloom. This is our sanctuary in the woods. We have a strong sense of community in one of the last untouched, if you will, areas in this county called Deep River. I understand that probably nothing I say here tonight will stop this development, but I will ask Mr. Stroud and his company to consider these things: the widest buffer you can place between any company and the residents of adjoining properties. Also, there will be a noise factor. Please consider that transfer trucks at a loading dock is not what I would like to wait to every morning. I am also very concerned for two beautiful ponds, and untouched ponds and 100-plus-year-old cabin that sits on the property, which the road was named for and the community holds so dear to their hearts. Please consider preserving this treasure. It is sad to think that many Deep River residents will lose their favorite place to catch a large bass, walk on God's creation, or have a sleepover with 78-year-olds from church at the pond and the cabins I talked about. I do not want my grandchildren thinking of nature only being seen at the local park. Please help us preserve as much of the Deep River community as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Now, is there someone else who would please come forward?
My name is Hubert Wall. I live at 363 Perry Pond Road. I'd like to thank you, first of all, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'd also like to thank Mandy Moss for coming and representing the residents on Perry Pond Road. I really didn't come here tonight intending on speaking, but just standing here, listening to some of the comments made and listening to some of the residents that live in the area, there's some concerns. We are concerned because Deep River is a small, quiet community. And it's not that we're against progress, but we also would like to preserve what we see as ours. Now, I believe Mrs. Thompson said that the 2020 Economic Development Plan, if I'm quoting it right, also was concerned about the negative impact of traffic on the area. And then, on the other hand, you hear people talk about widening Colon Road from Osgood and all the way to Deep River Road. I'm not a rocket scientist, but I'm not exactly a rock either. So anybody can tell you that's going to have a negative impact on the traffic in the area. There's several of us that are concerned about property taxes, because when we first heard about this a week or two ago, I really didn't know whether I was for it or against it. I wanted to gather some more information. Now, I've heard everything from a landfill to a golf course to a shopping center, and you know how rumors are. But I just, we're concerned about what it's going to do to our property value, because regardless of what anybody tells you, it is going to affect our property value. It'll either make it go down or make it go up, but it's going to do one of the two. So there's several that are concerned about that. And that's my biggest comment now, is what's it going to do to property values? We have no way of knowing. And actually, there was one other question, but I forgot what it was while I was standing here. So please begin, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak in opposition? Anyone else? If not, this public hearing will come to a close, and we will now ask the Planning Board and any of you who wish to accompany them to the Wicker Room to continue this conversation and their deliberations. And thank you all very much for being here and participating. We'll take just a minute for you to lead.
[laughing]
[inaudible]
Okay, all aboard. Moving right along, we will now, fellow Commissioners, consider any additions to the agenda, and if there are none, a motion that we approve the agenda. As it has been moved, if the agenda is approved, all in favor say aye. I oppose, thank you. And now for the consent agenda. I'd like to preface it by saying there are some resolutions tonight, and routinely, all things equal, we will approve the consent agenda, or if we don't, we'll talk about that. But embedded in it are these resolutions, and we do wish to recognize the individuals, and we have certificates for them, and so we'll come back after this is approved and recognize those people for the good things they've done and the recognition they deserve. So, having said that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. That's approved unanimously. Thank you. I would like to ask Barbara Miller to come forward, please. And you'll come right up to the, yeah, we may, you're going to feel free to say something to us if you'd like to. This is a great opportunity. But let me start it off by saying how pleased we are with your service to the county, and as you know, we're wishing to congratulate you on your years put in. And let me read this resolution to you, and then I'll hand it to you. Whereas Barbara Miller began employment with Lee County Senior Services as a temporary Diners Club manager on February 11, 2002, and worked until April 7, 2004. And whereas Barbara Miller was employed as a permanent part-time nutrition site manager, working 20 hours per week beginning May 17, 2004. And whereas Barbara, and whereas Barbara Miller has demonstrated a deep commitment to her job and to the citizens of Lee County. And whereas Barbara Miller will retire from Lee County Government on July 1, 2010, with a total of seven years and four months total service. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Barbara Miller and to express its appreciation to her for her dedicated service and contribution to Lee County. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lee County that it congratulates Barbara Miller for a career of public service, which has been characterized by a genuine interest in and concern for Lee County, and it wishes Barbara Miller continued success in all of her future endeavors. And this is adopted today, and we thank you and wish to make this presentation to you. Congratulations. Thank you for all of your work. Would you receive the? [applause] Would Kathy Backland please come forward? Good afternoon. I'd like to read a resolution that honors you at this time. Whereas Kathy Backland began employment with the Lee County Department of Social Services as a Secretary 4 on April 27, 1992. And whereas Kathy Backland continues employment with the Department of Social Services through May 31, 1996, upon her resignation to move out of state. And whereas Kathy Backland returned to the Department of Social Services on October 14, 1999 as Administrative Services Assistant 5. And whereas Kathy Backland has demonstrated a high commitment to her job Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lee County that it congratulates Barbara Miller for a career of public service, which has been characterized by a genuine interest in and concern for Lee County, and it's, and it wishes Barbara Miller continued success in all of her future endeavors. And this is adopted today, and we thank you and wish to make this presentation to you. Congratulations. Thank you for all of your work. Would you receive the? Would Kathy Backland please come forward? Good afternoon. I'd like to read a resolution that honors you at this time. Whereas Kathy, Kathy Backland began employment with the Lee County Department of Social Services as a Secretary Four on April 27, 1992. And whereas Kathy Backland continues employment with the Department of Social Services through May 31, 1996, upon her resignation to move out of state. And whereas Kathy Backland returned to the Department of Social Services on October 14, 1999, as Administrative Services Assistant Five. And whereas Kathy Backland has demonstrated a high commitment to her job and to the citizens of Lee County. And whereas Kathy Backland will retire on July 1, 2010, from the Department of Social Services as Personnel Technician Two, with a total of 14 years and 10 months service. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Kathy Backland and to express its appreciation to her for her dedicated service and contribution to Lee County. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Lee County that it congratulates Kathy Backland for a career of public service, which has been characterized by a genuine interest in and concern for Lee County, and it wishes Kathy Backland continued success in all of her future endeavors. Adopted this day, and we congratulate you. Now, we have another resolution, which is, we'll call Mr. Brinson, Mr. Dwayne Brinson. This is becoming a very pleasant repetition. You distinguish yourself in our, in our service. In recognition of Tax Administrator Dwayne Brinson, whereas on May 7, 2010, Tax Administrator Dwayne Brinson was awarded one of the 20, 2010 winners of the Triangle Business Journal Annual 40 Under 40 Awards. And whereas Mr. Brinson was selected from 121 individual nominees from across the state. And whereas awards are designed to recognize the most influential and accomplished young professionals in the area. And whereas winners are recognized on contributions made to their community and taking challenges in their work profession. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and congratulate Dwayne Brinson on this recent accomplishments adopted and presented this day of 2010. So, once again, we congratulate you for your good work.
If I can, real quick, I know my name is the one on the award, but I get to work with a great group of people. And like I told the people at Baker, there should be 20 or 30 people beside me. Just working with a great staff, and the people that I've taught with both in the public sector and in the business side, they deserve recognition too. So I appreciate all the help I've gotten along the way.
Well, thank you. And you'll receive this? And we have one more proclamation, and Mr. Pascal is going to make that presentation. Mr. Pascal?
Complimentation designated July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Lee County. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities, related to prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase the communities' economic prosperity through increased property taxes, expansion of the local base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to develop and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Lee County recognizes the benefit derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that July be recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Lee County, adopted this 21st day of June 2010. Richard B. Hayes, Chairman.
Is Mr. Payne here to, to receive that?
And we're having a busy summer. Our programs are full, our parks are full, and as Dwayne said, I've got a great staff, and it's wonderful to work with good people, because they're doing a lot of good things out there. So I think July's already here, because our programs are hopping and bobbing.
Best wishes to you, and thank you, and your department for all of your good efforts.
Well, thank you for your support. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Under public comments, I think there are none this evening, and so we will move to old business. And we will consider at this time the contract and resolution between Lee County and the Lee County Economic Development Corporation. And I'm going to call on Mrs. Dowrumpel to speak to us about this resolution and to put it into the proper context.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, for the last, well, I guess since we started meeting in November with the Town of Broadway Board, the City of Sanford Board, ourselves, and the EDC, the unemployment rate and economic situation have been of great concern to all the board members involved. And we decided, after some discussion, that it was time to revisit our economic development policy. At the April 5 Commissioners Meeting, Chairman Hayes appointed myself and Commissioner Reeves to act as the County Commissioner Representatives to a joint study committee on the economic development policy. We met with two members of the Sanford City Council, Mr. Gaskins and Mr. Williams, and also the Broadway Town Board, their representatives, Ms. Lynn Green and Ms. Clem Welch. We met in May with Vice Chairman Odom as an alternate, and had a good productive meeting, got started, looked at the old policy and decided we really needed to revamp. It sort of pigeonholed us as far as the incentives and economic development environment in not just our state, but really the nation and also the world that we find ourselves in today. After that meeting, we expanded the committee to include those that I just named, as well as County Manager John Crumpton, Mayor Cornelia Olive, City Manager Hal Hegwer, Broadway Town Manager Bob Stevens, Broadway Mayor Donald Andrews, Economic Development Director Bob Hutes, EDC Chairman Donnie Hunter, and EDC Member John Daniel. After that meeting, we, after much discussion, we reached the conclusion with much assistance from our county manager to bring us to the document that we have tonight before us, which is a new contract for EDC. To highlight some of the differences there, we felt like with the economic situation in our county right now, we definitely needed a team effort. So quarterly, the Economic Development Corporation Board will meet with us and give a presentation along with the Broadway Town Board and the City of Sanford Board. And that will be a quarterly meeting to assess the situation in Lee County, what we're doing right, what we can do better. And then, at the end of the year, we will have an assessment of the new policy, and also an economic outlook report for the county by the EDC Director. Those are some of the highlights of the new policy. If the county manager would like to add?
Well, it's a continuation of the old contract. A lot of other provisions, you know, are the same. There are some additional requirements on the EDC as far as evaluating the performance of the Economic Development Director, and reviewing that with the county manager. And also, it charges them with developing a, basically a strategic marketing plan to market the county. So, you know, those are some things that need to get put in place.
Well, we need to, probably to discuss this, I'd like to ask for it to be put in motion, and then we can have a discussion if there are those who wish to discuss it, and then bring it to a vote this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we accept. The contract is written.
Okay. The motion's been made that the contract is written, be approved. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of comments, and I really appreciate the efforts of you taking this ball and rolling with it. But as I read this contract, I thought, we still don't have a policy, you know? We, this basically is arrangement, and so, and as I read this, I interpreted to be that the EDC was going to basically create that policy. And I think that, it seems to me that we're abdicating our responsibilities. We, we need to have a role in that. And I think if we're ever going to measure return on investment, we need to have those goals out there, you know? Like, what are our goals? Is it tax-based diversification? Is it targeting business sectors, clusters? You know, where are we going with this? And I'm just not comfortable, you know, putting everything there. I think Donnie Hunter said it well when we had that joint meeting. He said, "They're just carrying out the policies that we've given them." And so I still don't see that this is really giving them any guidelines. So, and I think we need to set those goals and objectives, and we need to have a way to measure them. And so I don't see that here.
Would anybody like to answer that?
Well, I, I think in, in our discussions, in the committee meetings, that was part of the plan that the county manager is talking about, that, that they would maybe create some recommendations. I understand what you're saying, but our old policy was so pigeonholed. You know, with the 50% and the, the minimum investment, that type of thing. Ideally, I would love us to get to the point where we don't have to deal with incentives anymore. So, once we have that as our policy, that we offer incentives, then you can't blame a company for asking for them. So, we wanted to create a document that was more open-ended and was freer, so that essentially the EDC could look at a company that's looking at us and say, you know, "What will it take for you to do business in Lee County?" And maybe we don't have to go as far as we've gone in the past.
I, I still think that, you know, we need to have goals and objectives and objectives, so.
Let me take a shot at that. This provides a departure from where we were to where we hope to be, this, this contract, and it's sort of open-ended. But a part of this is that we are asking the Economic Development Corporation to, by the end of the year, to come back to us with a strategic or working plan, which would include those types of outcomes. As it shook, we, through these two meetings we had, really made those points very clear, that we wanted to see and be able to measure what was happening from month to month, from quarter to quarter, and certainly at the end of every year. And so, we not only wanted for them to keep those kinds of records, but to also look forward over a five-year period and project as best they could how they felt and what kind of recommendations they would make for us to grow the economic development operation in Lee County. And Chairman Hunter requested that this be, they be given till the end of the year to do this, because it will be no easy task to do that. They need to meet among themselves with our support. But at the end of the day, the Economic Development Corporation, whose total 100% focus is on economic development in Lee County, are willing to have agreed with the passage of this contract to, to do just that. And so, I think we are on our way, with the approval of this document, to raising the ante and saying that we're all interested in improving and in doing an even better job than has been done in the past. And I would add that a lot of good things have, as the public knows, have come out of this, this corporation. And there are comments about incentives, and people are, I suppose, mostly familiar with that. We, we want that to be looked at very carefully. And as, as Ms. Dowrumpel said, one of the things is we want to not be, we want to be competitive with other counties across the state, but we do not want to be foolish in what we do. We want to make sure that we have a level playing ground, and we talk to corporations, and they should not assume anything. And that, perhaps, I believe, is one of the most important features of this, that we will say, we will have these, every corporation, every industry, small business, large business, will be looked at individually, and we will talk with them and try, or they will try their best to develop the right package to grow business and industry in Lee County. So, I just want to assure you that we, we've turned an important corner, and this should be a considerable improvement over what we've had in the past. Not perfect. It'll take us a good year to really smooth this out, and, and with the nomination, perhaps, of new people on the Economic Development Board, we, the dynamics, to me, look right and healthy, and a positive move forward. So, I don't know if that will convince you, but...
It doesn't, because I think if you'd ask each member on here to give their definition of what is economic development, you'd get seven different answers.
Well, it means jobs, job growth, and it means the expansion and the growth of our tax base.
Diversification of our tax base, possibly. A permanent tax base growth, which sometimes those personal property tax credits we give aren't permanent. To me, I have a broader vision. I would like to see all of those that are currently making minimum wage be able to, you know, enhance their skills and their jobs. I would like to see some of those companies that come in here that we can actually see as part of that economic development plan, that we've got, you know, 100 new houses being built in here, whatever's realistic, and people coming in here. I think there's just a lot of factors that, when you look at that, it's just not about recruiting. You know, why can't we be a hub where professionals from other places that are starting their home businesses want to come here? You know, I mean, there's just lots of possibilities. So, you can't have a strategic plan unless you know what your goals and objectives are, what your vision is. And I, and that's what I see missing from here, but, you know, I think I'm outnumbered here, so.
No, I think, I think the, the joint meeting that starts their strategic planning process is where you discuss that. If, if we continue on as a group with the city and the town, everybody's got to have a say in that. If we're over here making our own policies and goals and that kind of stuff without collaborating with the others, you know, what's to say they're, they're going to go along with that? So, as long as we remain... So, as long as we remain in a joint agreement, we have to figure out a way, you know, to have these meetings, move forward as a group, and hopefully everybody will participate. So, I think, you know, that's, that's, you know, one of the first things that's got to happen here is they've got to get everybody together and talk about what's expected and what are the goals.
And I just hope all those major stakeholders will still be involved in determining what the policy will be, you know, how we expect to grow in Lee County. So, that's my main concern.
Other, other comments or questions?
I've got some questions, but I'd like to hear, if I understood it correctly, Commissioner Darumpel said we were pigeonholed, that the board is pigeonholed?
Well, with the economic development policy that we had, we had a minimum investment amount, you know, jobs, and, and the 50% incentive over five years. It was, it was, that was our package deal.
But, but the ante could always be raised depending on what was being offered. So, I just don't see how they were pigeonholed if the body, the Economic Development Board body decided that there needed to be a different offer of incentives made, all it required was a recommendation.
Oh, I, I understand, but...
Well, I just don't understand what, how we were pigeonholed. Let me ask you, on these, on this contract, on page 78, this is not a big deal, but it's interesting, that if a, let's say for example, 18 or 19-year staff person for the county goes to work for the EDC, and for whatever reason, there's a difference of opinion and that person's dismissed, they have no recourse, as I read this. Is that right? Or?
Under, they don't have a recourse under our personnel policy, whatever their policies would be at the EDC.
Okay, which means that we should see their policies to see how fairly it is structured so that... If, if we have a person who's got 18 years of experience, who may have been in finance, for example, and, and a position opens up with EDC, it reads as if that person wouldn't have any recourse with the county, that it would be subject to whatever they had in place, which I don't know what they have in place. Do you or anyone else?
I think that's right.
It'd be a separate corporation.
Yeah, they are a separate...
And that person would be a victim of an unfair predicament. Obviously, they go in knowing that, but why would we want to do something like that? I, I wouldn't.
You're saying to match them, I mean...
They have to have redress with this county government if they've got that many years in time and grave. That's just my opinion. The next one, on number three, such funds, the second sentence, "Such funds would be dispersed as directed by the Board of Commissioners." Tell me how that works or how it is going to work if you about EDC. On page 78, item number three, second sentence.
Lisa, you want to step up here and help answer this because it's kind of, it's not as simple as some of the others where we say we're just giving, you know, a quarter of their budget, you know, on the first of every month because we pay the salaries for the employees.
The way it's currently structured, we pay a percentage of their total budget. And because they are on our payroll and under our benefits, we actually pay all that. And so, we have to look at it each year to see if that total benefit package exceeds or not their total, our total percentage. If it exceeds, then the Economic Development Corporation reimburses us by the end of the year the amount that exceeds. If we're under, then we set it up as a contribution to the LCDC and we pay it out to them quarterly. The last few years, we've been exceeding, so they have to pay us back.
Which is our money to start with.
You're right.
Okay. Thank you.
We're getting some of it back.
Yeah. Thank you, without having to cut me.
This, go ahead, Mr. Reeves. But let me just answer this. On the funding mechanism, that is something that has been in place for, what, how many years? 10?
Probably for its existence.
Yeah.
But it has nothing to do, if it's never been addressed, and you don't have four votes to kill it.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, that's a simple thing.
Well, I think the, what, the point I'm making is this allows us to, as stakeholders, we're able to influence that budget since we pay two-thirds of it to, to have a, a vote in that. So, we're not shut out. In fact, we're very included in...
That's not my question. I merely wanted to understand how this would work. And I think she explained it by saying if it was over, they gave it back. If it's under, we had to make up the difference. I didn't understand it that way. My next is, and I've talked with Commissioner Darumpel about 5A. I still have great concerns about 5A, but I'm going to move on to item number E on page When I look at E and F, the, the first question comes to mind for me is, will this new board be addressing the partnership arrangements? Because what, when I consider a partnership, albeit we may not put in the same amount of money, if one gets in the deal, I'm expecting the other to, to comment on that one way or the other. So, how do we mend that into the fabric of this contract?
Do you want to...
No, no, go ahead.
This may not answer your question, but...
Here we go.
But we each have separate contracts with the EDC and I think they are poised, waiting for us to sort of, since we're the, the greatest contributor, to sort of setting the template. And, and they are, have been fully participating in these conversations, these committee meetings. And so, I, I think they're going to follow and they will change this agreement as they feel it necessary, but I think the spirit of it and the letter of it is here and I think they're going to be, you know, happy to, hopefully, to follow our lead and to finalize their own agreements.
I think this is something that we need to work through as we meet quarterly. Again, I'm going back to the teamwork analogy, that we need to all do better in, in the times that we're in, you know, as the three boards meet with the EDC four times every year.
Is that jointly or...
Mm-hmm.
It's jointly.
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 Yes. That, you know, I mean, we've, we've got still a tough road ahead of us in Lee County. And I, I think the more we're on board together and moving forward for the citizens, and I think at the next joint meeting, I mean, I completely understand what you're saying, Mr. Reeves, you know, if you're in partnership, you're in partnership. And, and everybody should play a part in that partnership.
Well, unless you've got partners like I play with, we go to McDonald's, we all eat and I get the cash.
Ah, yeah. I understand.
I got enough of those kind of partners.
I understand, I do. And, and again, I think that's something...
Right then, we're family.
Something we can address.
Well...
I mean, I'm not putting off things, but it's steps that we take.
I'm merely raising points that I think need to be considered.
Absolutely.
I haven't finished.
Absolutely.
I think that's a question for you, Mr. Reeves.
All right, that's fine.
Well, no, I just want to make a comment. This is a contract and I, I think we can look at this again next year if we need to and make some changes in it if we need to. We could even look at paragraph 5A again, Mr. Reeves, if you want to, next year. But, you know, we need to start somewhere.
I'm not trying to spoil the starting. I'm merely raising concerns that I have at this point to be on the table. That's all I'm doing.
Do you think we need to make those changes now? Will we enact this?
Let's, let's consider this. Tell me one project outside the city limits that the City of Sanford wouldn't benefit from, industry-wise. Name, name something that, large commercial project that they probably wouldn't benefit from. And that's not their fault, I'm just saying, they're in the business, they're in a warden's sewer business.
That's right.
Then that's what they're going to do. And it's automatic for them.
Well, that, that, it does, that does tell right into, you know, we just heard about 400-some acres and, you know, I don't, I don't know where you address it, but there's got to be, you know, we're going to have to as a board sooner or later grab hold and figure out, you know, warden's sewer and annexation. And I can tell you, you know, nobody in Lee County wants to be annexed in the city unless, you know, they're, you know, I, I think, we need to figure out how to, to get warden's sewer out without, you know, annexation.
You can, yeah. I was going to say leave annexation out of this discussion.
Yeah.
But I understand what you're saying.
But that is hand in hand with this.
And that was discussed at the committee meeting, exactly what you're talking about in the last meeting. And that's why I think it's so crucial to have these quarterly meetings, you know, especially through these difficult times for the communication and to get some of those issues resolved. Because we can talk here and they can talk in Broadway and they can talk in Sanford, but until we're all in the same room talking together, it's going to take forever to solve these problems.
And as actually Mr. Reeves and myself talked about before, on some of these jobs or some of these businesses, the City of Sanford actually sees a return on the money before we do.
Long before.
Yeah.
And, and I'm just putting it out here because you're discussing it and I may not be at that meeting you're talking about, but this issue is important when something comes to this county board for approval or rejection. And if your partners are going to be your partners, they at least ought to offer up an explanation why they don't think they ought to participate. And I can appreciate that, but...
I have problems with, with paragraph 5B and that's the one that I just can't vote yes on this because that's the one that basically gives the EDC the power to develop and implement an effective economic development program. How do you measure effective, you know? So, I cannot vote for this contract with that in it. I'd like to see it tabled. I think we've all had some good...
I haven't finished. If I ever get a chance to finish, I'll agree with you.
Okay.
I think this document would give us control over that one paragraph, this board.
Mr. Chairman, to discuss the one issue Mr. Reeves brought up, I'm still of the belief we need an interlocal agreement with the city and the town on this matter. We have too many handshake agreements and we need to start getting things in writing between us and the city and, and doing it in advance. So, what he's referencing here to say, well, what's the city going to do? I think it needs to be addressed in an interlocal agreement with them since they're a separate corporation from the EDC.
Well, I, I think you're right and that's something that we've talked about, needs to be addressed. This is a sort of, I think, a, a marketing initiative, a resolution that steps up the pace, brings us together more often, has us talking about how we can expand and develop. It's a sort of general document that is designed to sort of bring us closer together. And, and I think you'd agree, Mr. Crumpton, I believe I hear you saying that we need to address the sort of interlocutory agreements and we need to look at the financial ramifications of those. And I think that's another piece of this equation. Would you agree with that?
I think, I think once you do this, we need to get right with our partners and develop that interlocal agreement.
Well, I, I...
Now, here's an example. Look at item number six on the same page, 79. This promotes itself as an automatic deal. You appropriate money, I take it. No need to stop in and say anything, just send a check. If it doesn't, then tell me what it does do. I, I don't want to belabor. I do want to offer up one amendment there because this is a very strong concern to me. I think it's only appropriate that the Economic Development Director check in with the county manager before every one of our board meetings to discuss whether there's something of importance that can't wait and this board should be made aware. At the very least, I would expect this board to do that. Well, I offer that as an amendment to the contract. If you want to do it now, if I, if you don't, you don't.
Let me just ask, if we vote on this, does this mean that they develop the policy and whatever and we accept only what they're saying is economic development?
Well, keep in mind that we are on that board and the city is on that board and Broadway is on the EDC board. It's not like they and us. We are part of it. We are, we are the reason and, and for what they are today. And so, what we're trying to do is improve it, strengthen it, but we'll be there and so...
These seven members are responsible for the taxpayers and if we're releasing revenues for something, those taxpayers need to see a measurable return on investment, not something subjective, so...
Well, they, they will, Mrs. Shook, I assure you, they will. And that's what we're all striving for. We want more facts and figures and so, I can only say to you...
And who's going to decide what those facts and figures are?
Well, they are a separate corporation and their whole mission is to grow the economy of Lee County. And, and they will be asked through this document to, to hasten that and to be more explicit about what they're doing and why they're doing it and with the partners. So, I mean, it's, there's no simple answer, but I think that through the last six to eight months, we've been working in good faith with the EDC, with Mr. Hughes, and recognizing the very good work that, that he and that board have done through the years. I, you know, I've not heard too many complaints about it. We're in hard times now and therefore it's sort of under the microscope and we're looking at it again and we're saying, let's, let's make sure that there's no room for slippage here. And, Mr. Reeves, your points are well-made. And, and these can be a part of that whole, the spirit of the whole thing. I think that we could talk a great deal of the time and if we fail to resolve something, we may, we may just continue to talk at each other. But this is, this, the attempt here is to move it forward, give it a year or longer and to really be involved with it like we've never been before. And those financial considerations need to be, come right in after this. That is the interlocutory relationships. We need to ask some hard questions.
We're locked into this for a year?
Well, it, it's sort of open-ended, but we are the major stakeholders in this and anytime we wish to bring the EDC or Mr. Hughes here and question him, and keeping in mind, we'll be meeting every quarter as a group to get...
So, this contract can be amended if, if the majority of this board finds something here that needs to be added?
They would have to agree to it also.
Right.
For an amendment.
Okay.
They have to agree to it also?
Yeah. The contract basically runs with the fiscal year. So, as long as we, with the funds in the budget, fund them, you know, we're, we're agreeing to fund them for another year.
An amendment has been made to the motion and if it's okay, if everybody has sort of had their say, I think we ought to vote on that amendment and then vote on the, on the motion. So, did anybody, Mrs. Lee, does anyone have the wording of that amendment?
It's written right there. What I was saying is this, before each meeting, I would expect that the EDC board instruct their director, and I don't like to get into names and all that, just instruct their director to check in with the county manager to make a determination on whether he needs him here for this board or for whatever's going on. That's exactly right. We got seven other directors that do the same thing already.
All in favor of that amendment, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? There's no opposition, so now let us approve the amended motion at this time. All in favor of the amended motion as we have just described it and stated it, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One person is in opposition. Thank you very much. Under section six of our agenda, the next item is a public hearing and approval of the fire department budget ordinance. And Mr. Andrews is here to... of the fire department budget ordinance, and, um, Mr. Andrews is here to speak with us about that.
Chairman, members of the board, back on June the sixth, the fire advisory board came before you with the recommendation of the voluntary fire department budgets for fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. We presented those budgets, at that time requested you schedule a public hearing, um, for your next meeting, which was today, June the twenty first. Um, just a quick synopsis of the, uh, the budget, you should have a copy of the budget ordinance in your packet. Um, I can run through it real quick. Cape Fear rate would be eight six per hundred, Carolina Trace would be six seven per hundred, Deep River would be ten oh four per hundred, Lemon Springs is eight four per hundred, Northview is eight one per hundred, and that will also include the, the West Sanford District, which is now merging, uh, with Northview, take it July the first. Tramway is eight cents per hundred and West Pocket is eleven eight per hundred.
Are there any, uh, questions, Mr. Andrews? Before we go into a public hearing, uh, you'll have to.
Go ahead, I'll wait.
All right, we will now go into a public hearing, uh, regarding, uh, this matter, uh, approval of the fire department budget. And I'd like to ask anyone who is here who would wish to speak in favor, please do so. Mr. Andrews, did I miss something?
No, sir, he's gonna speak in favor. Since the fire advisory board unanimously voted to recommend these to you, we support these budget recommendations.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else here who would wish to speak in favor of?
You said in favor, I'll, I'll stand back here.
I'm sorry.
You ready?
Yes, sir, please.
I had a plan.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, you're, you're speaking against, okay, hang just one second, just one second, right there. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of? If not, uh, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, please, your name and address, please.
My name is Tony Reagan, live, uh, forty-five oh seven Lower River Road in Lee County. And I'm not really for or against it, I, I just had a question more or less, why is Deep River's ten point seven or something? I, I don't understand how they're so much higher than what else.
Ten point four, it really, it has to do with their tax base being smaller than others.
Yeah, but their portion not helping out him?
It, it does help them out.
I mean, I, I was a member of, of the board the rest of the years out there, and we, we were never that high. And now all of a sudden, we stayed eight, eight and a half, and I used to think ten, what is the minimum can go up to now?
Fifty, that's the max.
I, I was early with ten before, I just wanted to let you know, I think that's a little high for Deep River. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, is there anyone else here who would speak in opposition?
Ms. Chairman, have a motion.
Well, let me close the public hearing, and now there's a motion.
Approve the rates as submitted.
Okay, the motion's been made to approve the rate schedule as submitted, uh, is there any question, comment by the commission? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you very much. We now will have a, um, public hearing and approval process for an amendment to the two thousand eight CDBG scattered site housing project. Karen Kennedy, Mrs. Kennedy's here to speak to us about that.
Good evening.
Hi.
Tonight I bring before you an amendment package for our community development block grant project. One of the system participation requirements through the division of community assistance is that when we have major changes to the original project application, we must advertise and conduct a public hearing about this amendment. From the original application, we are just changing a grant recipient. Uh, some changes over the past few years, when you turn in a grant application, you had to submit the actual names of the people you were going to help. We have been working with a family for eighteen months, um, to help them relocate, and it just has not worked out. So, um, she finally volunteered to, to pass on the program, which meant we had to find someone else. We had some on, on the waiting list, and that is Ms. Tanny Barton, as you have in your package at Buchanan Street, that we would like to insert in that place to work with her for acquisition and relocation.
Oh, is that, you finished?
You have a package of paperwork, it just works that.
Any, any questions?
Lots of paperwork.
Any questions, commission?
Explain to me what relocation actually is, what that involves, is that somebody moving their house or them moving or?
It is the person moving, it is usually when a house is severely dilapidated, and in, we were to do rehab, the bid would come in much higher than the house was worth. So there is an activity line item that's called acquisition and relocation, where we would acquire the house they live in and assist them in finding a new home. Um, the program allows for working with tenants and with homeowners, but this particular situation is a homeowner. And, uh, we will be acquiring the house she lives in, we will not acquire the land, so we'll get voluntary demolition agreement. And, as the city does, city county does not need any more vacant lots sitting around. And she has agreed to that, this, this new person, and we will help her find a new home for her and her daughter. Her house is in, is severely dilapidated, she's been going through some issues with code enforcement, and just happened to be in the right place at the right time.
So with the taxes, she continues to pay taxes on the property with the house demolished, is that right?
She'll have property taxes for vacant property.
Okay, and, but you're finding her another place to rent?
No, she will be a homeowner, and she'll pay taxes on that on her own.
So she'll be paying taxes on two parcels?
Right.
Okay.
She'll become a homeowner just like everyone. Another homeowner, she is currently a homeowner, she'll just live somewhere else.
I've got a question, I don't want to, uh, debate or really discuss it, I just have a question. When, in some of these relocations, are they eligible for, uh, brick capital?
They can do, they, if.
Is that a?
We could ask them, you know, we haven't asked Ms. Martin, we could ask her, um, or anyone, if they are interested in having a home built for them on any of the lots that recapitalized.
I, I would like to recommend that we consider making that a, a first step in the process of relocation, because if the city, I think, offers up properties for brick capital, and why not make better use of those lots by encouraging folks to use the ones that, that brick capital?
As, as long as the, um, the purchase price through the brick capital construction work would fit in the grant guidelines that we've established based on comparables.
All things in negotiation.
That's right. That's right. And I know we can work with the brick capital.
Is, is that something you'd like them to take under advisement, Mr. Reeves?
I don't wanna take you serious.
I'll call them tomorrow.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
One more, once a house is rehabbed, how does the tax administrator pick up the additional values? Is that just during the next rebuild time or?
Not if it's a significant improvement, and they'll pick it up right away from, from the building permit.
Okay, because some of these, like, were, you know, twenty thousand dollars or whatever, right, or more?
I wish we could get a rehabilitation for twenty thousand dollars, rehabilitations now are forty and up easily.
Forty thousand and up?
Yeah.
Now, with these people, is this gonna present a problem with them being able to afford the increased taxes? Cause that, that seems like a big jump to me, but I guess that's not my problem, so. So once the building permit comes in there, then that automatically?
It triggers a mechanism for the tax department to start looking at.
We get a lot of response from our local contractors on these projects.
We have had more in the last, say, two years, I, I retract my initial note, um, but predominantly no, we don't. We have had some response in the last few years.
Any other questions?
Always have to take a low bid on that.
Lowest responsible bid, because we check references, and that has helped us in the past with not having to take the most.
If you have a Lee County contractor that's close, you, I mean, to the, that would be, is that the responsible word?
Responsible, that's not responsible. The only way we could ever trigger that is if we made proximity to Sanford a, a criteria, and that's hard to do for construction.
Okay. Moving right along, we're going to, uh, thank the commissioners for their questions and comments and declare this, uh, public hearing open at this time. And I'd like to call on anyone here who would wish to speak in favor of approval of the amendment to the CDBG project. Please come forward. If not, is there anyone here who would speak in opposition? If not, I'll declare this public hearing closed, and there's a motion to approve, uh, the CDBG scattered site housing project as presented, all in favor?
With an amendment.
Okay.
That, that, that they start negotiating with the recipient and brick capital for lots and or houses.
Okay, all right, as amended. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Reeves made the amendment, and I believe he made the original motion, Mr. Hovum. Okay, uh, under new business. Mrs. Kennedy.
I'd like to introduce to you the current chairperson of the Sanford Lee County Youth Council, who's here to just make his annual report about the activities. His name is Ulysses Louviana.
Hello.
Chairman Hayes.
How are you?
Board of Commissioners.
My name is Ulysses Louviana, I'm the chairman for the City of Sanford, Lee County Youth Council. The Youth Council was formally recognized with an official government charter back in October two thousand seven, and this charter served as a fundamental to the development of youth voice in our community. Our mission is to represent the views and needs of Sanford and Lee County's youth to our local government decision makers and to help high school students gain an understanding and appreciation of how local government impacts their everyday lives. The Youth Council decided to have more of a learning year. We have had different presentations at our meetings to learn how our local government works and the different departments within the city and county. Our different presentations included the Health Department, the Sanford Lee County Community Development Department, the Chamber of Commerce, Public Works, and many other departments. The Health Department discussed with the Youth Council about Lee Cam. Five of the council members applied to be volunteers for Lee Cam. We had, also have a public speaking session and a team building exercise session. Our accomplishments for this year include the NC litter sweep in downtown Sanford last year and this past Saturday. And we also accomplished the distribution of the Youth Council Citizens Guide. The Mayor Olive also came to the council for a community project. The Youth Council helped with the census two thousand ten by placing yard signs around designated areas around the county. Our ongoing project include, included the downtown litter sweep this past Saturday. We're also looking into possibly purchasing environmentally friendly books for students in Lee County. Um, at this time, we're still planning about the environmental books, I have no more information on that. Uh, one of our own Youth Council members, Taylor Waters, participated in an American Red Cross scholarship program called the Queen of Parks. The Queen of Parks is an outgoing spirit who has a passion for her community and a drive to help others. She is a creative, she is creative in her fundraising and strong in her support for the mission of the Red Cross. Taylor Waters helped to raise six thousand dollars for Lee County's Red, Red Cross, and combined with Chatham County, it was ten thousand dollars. And she raised the most, most money, and she earned the title of Queen of Parks. With all that we have learned with different departments from the different departments within the county, we'll be better prepared to represent the needs and views of Sanford and Lee County's youth. We look forward to serving youth in our community and making it a better place to grow.
Thank you, stay right there just a second, Mr. Louviana, would there be any comments or questions from any members of the commission?
You've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. The, uh, the next item is item B, uh, page one oh one, one oh two in our agenda packet. Uh, recognition of volunteer, voluntary agricultural landowners, and, um, Mrs. Conlon, would you, are you gonna talk to us about this or?
I'm going to have, um, Mr. Tommy Brooks.
Oh, Mr.
And our chairman, Don Nicholson.
Okay, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Nicholson.
Thank you.
Hi.
Uh, as all of you probably remember, uh, about a year ago, uh, you approved the creation of and made appointments to, uh, the Ag Advisory Board here in Lee County. And since its creation and your appointments to that board, that board has been meeting monthly. And through a lot of debate and a lot of discussion, uh, they have developed the application process uh, for, uh, landowners that want to apply to have their land included in the voluntary ag district. Uh, they have, and this was a long drawn out process, they have developed, uh, the signs that are on the floor in front of you tonight. Uh, uh, and actually the, the original conceptual design from which this sign evolved from was the creation of a local Lee County farm. So, uh, there's a lot of local ownership in, in, in the signage that, that is here tonight. Uh, this board has, has gone ahead and gone, they've gone a step further than that, they, they, uh, created a, a informational pamphlet for distribution at, um, area landowners' meetings anywhere in the county uh, to publicize the program and inform the public as to what it was and the advantages of having their land enrolled into the program. Uh, just this past April, the Ag Advisory Board, after completing the application form and feeling very comfortable with it, began accepting applications. And to date, have accepted and approved applications from nine families in the county, uh, totaling a little over sixteen hundred acres for acceptance in the program, and that's why we're here tonight. That having been said, let me ask, ask the Chair of the Ag Advisory Board, Mr. Don Nicholson, to come up and, and he will help facilitate the process of the presentation of, of the signage to these families.
Okay, thank you. How are y'all?
Fine.
Again, glad to come back and talk to y'all again, uh, we appreciate your support, and Ms. Diana Rumpel, I expect to see your husbands.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else that owns land, I expect to see a VAD application in Susan's office soon. Just a few words about the VAD, um, we're not only here to increase the visibility of agriculture and forestry and horticulture here in the county, uh, but it's also encouraged the preservation and protection of family farms and farmlands. Um, y'all done a lot of talking about economic development, and I hope that you all see that agriculture is still part of the economic development of this county. We, you know, had John Payne up here talking about Parks and Rec and, and recognizing him and his folks, and, you know, this is part of VAD is also preserving some open space, you know, there's a lot of reasons that people move to Lee County. And we're still a fairly picturesque county, because we still have a lot of farmland outside the city limits, and we want to preserve that. So the first nine folks that have been approved by our, our board are Worth and Nancy Pickard, and Chairman, would you like me to have them come up?
Please.
At the time, or?
I think if, we'll, we'll call their names out and they can come up, and their signs are here, and, and we'll make sure that they got, walk away with a proper sign. Um, I, I have those names, and, uh, if you'd like to go ahead and.
Carrie Alston.
Okay, well, let me, uh, we'll say, uh, Worth and Nancy Pickard, if you would come forward, um, and, uh, they are landowner. We wanted to distinguish the different participants in this, and, uh, the Pickards are landowners, I'd like to, um, now call on Mrs. Barringer, Jane Barringer, she is a landowner, uh, bridge, road, farm, family. Worth, stick around. Mrs. Barringer, come, come forward. Okay, and, uh, Mr. Alan Cox, a livestock farmer, is, he's not here?
I'm there.
Okay, Barbara and Rivas Alphen, landowners, are they here? Okay, uh, produce farmer Wayne and Geraldine Yarborough. Produce and poultry farmer William and Gail Logan. Okay. Livestock farmer Tony and Martha Reagan. Landowner Eunice Cameron. Landowner Fay and Cecil Cameron. And these are our award recipients, so to speak. We congratulate you on this distinguished moment after the first year. And these signs will be displayed on your properties and then, of course, we'll have some, I believe, Mr. Nicholson, at proper places on the highways to.
At entrances in and out of the townships in the county, we're gonna be putting up a larger sign like this one up here. I forget how many, Tommy, do you remember how many signs we kinda came up with the other day?
Up, uh, up to 20.
Yeah, so, we're gonna try to be as visible as we can. And I'd like to also let everybody know that Wayne, Ms. Barringer, Mr. Pickard, and Tony are on our board, on our agricultural board too. And they've been very diligent in their service to the board and we appreciate them and we appreciate your support.
We appreciate your leadership and your participation, ladies and gentlemen, and so we congratulate you. And thank you very much.
Try and get a picture with Don and everybody. Sort of hold the signs up a little bit. One of us got to give.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Don.
Oh, yes. Okay. One more comment before I sit down and shut up. There is, there was some concern that, you know, we hadn't had to rush to the office to get everybody in that could get in. But, you know, we're looking at a bunch of farmers who are in the middle of a crop. And I expect this fall that we're gonna get a lot more acres involved in Lee County. So, we appreciate your support and I'll hope to keep growing.
Or the first rainy day.
Do your rain dance, I won't see you.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item of business is an update from the Health Department. Health Department Director, Mr. Surfus, is gonna speak with us.
Chairman, if I could, Dr. Fisher wanted to comment first.
And Dr. Fisher, welcome.
Mr. Hayes.
Hi.
Commissioners, thank you for giving us the opportunity to take a few minutes of your time tonight. For quite some time, the Board of Health has recognized a need for changes in Lee County's animal control program. And during the past few years, there have been several attempts at rewriting our outdated ordinances. The last attempt was two, three years ago and we did prepare a draft document and it was sent to the Institute of Government for approval. And that document returned to us with so many red marks on it that we decided that it was unusable. And it sort of died. Continued revision was stalled as we dealt with finding a new Health Director a couple of years ago. Then we were faced with H1N1 and the economic downturn. All of these things sort of pushed this project into the background. But it was not forgotten. As the board looks back today, I think that probably these delays may have been a good thing. I know some of you are acutely aware that the awareness of animal issues in this county and expectations of citizens have changed greatly. And I think that if we had prepared a document two, three years ago, it would not have addressed many of these issues that have come to the forefront today. Our Health Director, Mr. Surfus, recognized the need for us to investigate the various issues that might be considered new issues and the new awarenesses of things that our citizens have. He also wanted us to research what other communities and counties were doing with their animal ordinances so that we could prepare a document that would be up to date and would be meaningful. At his suggestion, we developed a subcommittee to prepare this document. Our board member Kenny Cole is the chairperson of this committee. And the board has also employed Mr. Cole and a member of a local animal rights group, CARA, to act as consultants to find information for us and to research the issues. Also, on the Health Department staff, Mr. Heath Kane has been an invaluable member and he has participated greatly in taking care of this for us. Mr. Cole and Mr. Kane are here tonight and if you have any questions, I'm sure they'll be glad to answer them. Mr. Carl Iceman, who is not here tonight, is Head of Animal Services. And I can tell you that he has remained with us gratefully under some of the most stressful conditions that I can imagine. Many of animal issues have a very emotional component. And Mr. Iceman and his staff are often caught in the middle of what citizens want and what the county is able to provide. We recognize in these difficult economic times that money is tight and we are not making any recommendations that would cost us any money for this next fiscal year. I think that will be also a blessing in that it will give us some time to look at the direction that we want Animal Services to take in this camp. Mr. Surfus has some comments and then if you have questions, we'd be glad to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I tend to be a person who is short of the point and I wanted to give you some good feedback tonight. But I also wanted to do it in the sense of saying to you, we think we're doing a good job. We also have warts, we wanted you to know both. And this is why I came forward this evening with what I call strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. Meaning, here's where we are today within the Lee County Health Department. Obviously, we have a number of strengths. I'm very proud of that department and I think they work awfully hard. I will say that in Lee County, we actually do not have animal problems. We do have people problems and sometimes we are caught in the middle there. However, having said that, I would like to say that if you go to page two of the analysis that I gave you, is that we are looking at some opportunities to improve. And actually, I was looking at these opportunities since September of '08. I'd been here less than a month and started meeting with some community groups and they began to lay out their agendas. And I began to listen to those agendas. And all of a sudden, also in October of '08, we had the greatest economic downturn since the Great Depression. Now, I'm not big on recommending changes that are gonna cost any Board of Health or any Board of Commissioners money in the face of that. So, any recommendations that I gave to my board and I've made this public, I really don't think we ought to put into place until next spring, assuming there's a budget attached to them. That's out of respect for the economic conditions in which we find ourselves. And when we started the Animal Control Subcommittee last November, and I've listed that under the Opportunities, we took a number of areas that I feel like are really on the minds of some people. And it depends on who you talk to. But animal cruelty oftentimes is first and foremost. What are we doing with animal cruelty or more importantly, what aren't we doing? Enforcement of codes, euthanasia, how we get rid of an animal. Tethering, the leash law, computerization. And we are addressing all of those case by case, point by point. I know Mr. Hoyle, Mr. Talbot, the county manager, one time within the last two months, actually went out and witnessed euthanasia of animals at our shelter. And that's not an easy thing to do. I appreciate those gentlemen doing something you have to see to make it make sense because we indeed are doing the best we can to follow the law as we see that law. We also had a vacant position this past spring. I asked for it, helped if I could freeze that position so we can bring on a couple of consultants. Not to go back to the Commissioners for the money, but to use that money to hire the Animal Rights Group, CARA, and Mr. Cole to take a look at these from the standpoint of best practices. Best practices in the 99 other counties, best practices with animal rights groups. We're getting an awful lot of information in. And one of the things I would like to say as we look at this, that I have asked a lot of people and they get a fair amount of criticism myself, but that's okay because my skin's probably as thick as yours, at least three, four inches. What we need is a lot of patience right now. Now, I don't mean more patience to the Health Department, not sick people. I mean the quality of patience because we have a very good subcommittee. Mr. Cole chairs that subcommittee and I know he'll be glad to comment if you have a question or two. And we're simply looking at a lot of things. Took us a number of years to get where we are. We started this last November. We figured we would get out of it within nine to 12 months. We're moving as quickly as we can. One of the reasons we waited till November, one of the warts you got, standing right here, me. H1N1 came in and I actually pulled animal control from time to time and literally put them in the mix to help us with that particular program in terms of inventory and that. And that was in lieu of trying to spend county dollars which you all graciously gave us last year, which we appreciate, but I think we've probably ended up also returning some of those county dollars trying to maximize on the state or the federal. When you take a look at where we need to go, one of my weaknesses that I've listed is staff time in the business. Mr. Iceman has seven years, everyone else has two years or less. That's under three years average. That's a tough scenario. That program takes about 10% of my budget, maybe 11%. I think Mr. Crumpton would probably know that more accurately. Probably spend a third to 40% of my time a day on that. In terms of fielding, phone calls, talking with staff, trying to make sure it goes. Because we feel like there is a light at the end of the tunnel and that light is not the train bearing down on us. I think there will be improvement, but we just need some patience so Mr. Cole and his group can get to the end of it. There's other issues, I'm not gonna fuss with those. We'd like to have a full complement of staff, but at the same time, we recognize our job also to be good stewards of the county dollar. And if you give us four, we'll deal with four. We'd love six, have to say that, but we'll take what we have and try to make it work. One of the things too, and I wanted to comment just briefly on this issue of cruelty, because one of the things that Health Directors are told every time they go to meetings at Chapel Hill and the Institute of Government, your key job in animal control is rabies control. If you ever read the books on rabies control, it's a tough scenario and you better handle it well in your county. That's my first priority in animal control. Everything else, second. Doesn't mean it's not important, but everything else is a second. So that at the end of the day, if we have to deal with picking up animals or the potential for a dog bite or chasing a dog that, you know, may have bitten a child or potentially, that's what we have to do. And I give oftentimes standing orders to staff. You're telling me two things, here's the one you do, make it work, okay? And I get involved in some of those decisions. There have been some discussion about issues of cruelty to animals. And since I have been here, I have never seen what I would determine to be full-blown cruelty. So, I don't feel like we've ever had to conduct a full-blown cruelty investigation, okay? Meaning, you bring out the Sheriff's Department, meaning I come hat in hand to the manager and say, I need some help. I've gotta pay vet bills. I've gotta pay a place to house, put these, you know, house these animals, this kind of thing. And one of the reasons that we were asked to stay out of the cruelty business came from, and Mr. Hoyle and I have had some discussions on this, but the School of Government at Chapel Hill has decided that, had decided that through one of their most recent publications in '08, that cruelty investigators not be county employees. So, here I'm dancing out in the field. I can't send staff out to do it and I've got it here, okay? However, we have a demand to deal with it. So, we came up with educational sessions. We go out and talk to the public, just like we would on everything else, and we'll say, please fix it. Here's the deal, can you take care of it? We've also encouraged citizens to get involved. We've also encouraged CARA themselves to get involved, the Local Animal Rights Group. Why? Because they have rescue in their name, that's why. I think that's an important thing. Cruelty to animals, it's not just an issue that falls to local government. Actually, anyone can file a civil case and I believe I'm correct on that, Mr. Hoyle. So, one of the things we are now doing though is that any time there is a call, in any way, shape, or form, we are going to go out on it and instead of making our normal one educational visit, we're gonna make two. We may bring a camera out, we may take pictures, and we're going to be doing some follow-up. And I want you to know that, and if this has been a distraction to you and your work, I do apologize. That was not our intent. We do try to handle these things as well as we can. But it's interesting what some people will call cruelty and some, what some people won't. We had a case last summer, the horses. The horses were emaciated and they were living on a farm. There were three of them, they were dying. You wouldn't believe what we were called, we were told, because we didn't do anything with the horses. Come to find out, the gentleman who owned the horses was keeping them as family pets because they had cancer. His vet was keeping them alive. That's the point. One person's ceiling is another person's floor. We're doing about the best we can. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. And one of the things we are looking at through Mr. Cole's committee is whether or not we need a vet on site and/or vet tech so we can make better decisions. Right now, I'm your vet. Well, I'm Carl Iceman. Not a very good one. I agree with Mr. Reeves. But we're here.
No, I was sympathizing with you. That's not a good position to be in.
Well, it's the rock and the hard place, but that's okay. You know, my solution always is find a solution. There's one out there, we just have to figure it out. I appreciate what the staff has done, they've stuck with it. The Board of Health has been very supportive. I appreciate the feedback we get. Mr. Crumpton and I often talk about this and I think we're moving in a good direction so that hopefully this fall, Mr. Cole, we'll have a solution from the Animal Control Subcommittee. What I really wanna do is clear this mess up. We are clearing it up, but please feel free, anytime you have a question or a comment, you can get me on the phone anytime, I'll be glad to talk to you. And we do appreciate our citizens, we do appreciate their calling in. We just don't always agree with why they called in, you know? However, our job is to do the best we can to check out whatever concerns they have and determine whether or not they're legitimate or not legitimate. So, that was primarily what I wanted to offer you tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Stay with us just a second. Are there any comments or questions from any of the?
Two quick things. One is, I know there's been some discussion about updating or installing a computer software program. Just something so that we can capture data better.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that moving forward?
I have a meeting, had a meeting actually last week with IT, person got sick. That's been rescheduled for this week. I've seen the software. What we're gonna do is go down to Mr. Crumpton's new IT room and I wanna put it on big screen, I wanna play with it.
Okay.
It looks tentatively good.
Sure.
And at this point, that is one of the items on the agenda, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And second question, and again, this is just one citizen's contact that I received. But, and I wasn't aware of this, but there's a rule of 72 hours at the animal shelter and then the animals euthanized?
Yes, ma'am. Let me tell you how that works.
Address some of that because this person is with CARA and she was concerned that maybe there could be some compromise to hold that animal a little bit longer to find it a home.
And that's a good point. Let me get my water, I've got a sore throat if you don't mind. This is something that we've had discussion with Mr. Hoyle on. Basically, the way state law reads, we can keep an animal for 72 hours. On the 73rd hour, if we so choose, we can get rid of that animal. It is my opinion as the Director, personally and professionally, we can keep that dog there for a year if you want it. Here's our problem. Problem's occupancy. I don't have the space. We have 16 kennels for regular dogs. And I'm talking more dogs now, cats you can kinda play with, they have the individual cages. And then we have four bite cages. We did the analysis on the bite cages for the animals. We did the analysis on the bite cages for the animals that have to be held for 10 days, and nobody's going to adopt them anyway, but that occupancy is close to 90%, pre-high. And that's an average over the year, much greater in the summer, okay? People are out more, dogs are out more, so we have, we have a balance problem, it's juggling that ball. And the other thing, what we've done is we've said, "If you're interested in an animal, come and get it." What they have asked us is, "Well, gee, can't you call us?" Well, we're actually on Pet Finders, take a look at it, it's there. I mean, the reality is, we're showing that. We have asked these folks to show up, because the other reality is that if you run a rescue association, and even though you may be not-for-profit, you do make money on the sale of that dog, okay? We're going to do everything we can to make your business work, we want the same thing in return. And if we are stuck in a situation where, when Mr. Isman tells me, "All kennels are full, and we brought in 14 today," now, doesn't happen every day.
Sure.
What you're going to do? What we are now doing, we had this discussion this morning, we're meeting almost daily on some of these problems that come up, is we're going to euthanize daily, unless the rescue groups come in. And let me tell you how we're, what we're trying to do as far as ourselves adopting out animals. We average, excuse me, 60, I'm sorry, 69.6, I didn't know 0.6 of an animal, 70 animals a month, of which we adopt out 26, so let's say about a third. We actually have an agreement with Walmart. We were there three weekends ago on a Saturday, pet adoption fair. We adopted out 12, Mr. Kane. Received that same day in the shelter, 16.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay. And that's the problem. We don't have any space for them. I submitted a budget about a month ago for something called animal cruelty, if we had to get into it. And I asked for eight more kennels, we may have to go that route. There's such a thing as an in-and-out shelter. We have an in-and-out. That's where they're inside, but you can close it. The problem is, it's not going to work in the winter times, not going to work in a heavy rain, and it's not going to work when it's cold. And that's the problem. Why do we try to separate animals one by one? Because they're sick, they're injured, they're diseased, they have parvovirus. My problem comes in if we had to start taking in a lot of animals that were sent to us by the courts because of the cruelty situation, I don't have a place to put them as separate from the other animals. So then you have to go into the other business. But do we try to keep them? Yes. Do we try to encourage it? Stell Rimpel, let me tell you how hard we try to encourage it. We actually hired a person, Heather Jackson, who actually owns her own rescue group. We don't want to get rid of them. We sometimes don't have a choice. It is literally the rock and the hard place. We took a visit to Catawba County, I didn't, but Carl Isman, do they have storage there for 300 animals? We don't. If I had that, I think I was in the Taj Mahal. But again, Cole tells me that we're at the Taj Mahal here compared to Pender County, okay? So we're improving. It will take a while. And would I go to you today and say, "Give me money to improve and add to my shelter"? No, ma'am. I think you've got a lot of other stuff to do. And I think it probably is more important than that, even though I think that that is very important. But what we are going to start doing is A, euthanizing quicker, B, telling the rescue groups, "You want it, you come in, you get it, and you move quickly, we just can't hold it." And C, we may have to look for foster places in the community. But see, that's a tough one too, because if you're holding them, and it's an animal that hadn't been tagged, and we're not sure of the status with rabies, that, that's the problem you run into. It's just, it's, you know? I hope that helps, ma'am.
Just one question or two. Is there a grading process of these animals? In other words, do you have any opportunity to say, "These are desperately ill, and therefore might be, you know, not in the group to be saved"? Can you sort of winnie out those that are more adoptable, or do you leave that up to CARA or those places?
We're happy, yes, sir. We're happy to get the best animals we can. Mr. Hoyle and I had a discussion actually about that, I believe, last Thursday and Friday in terms of who can make the decision on sick and injured animals. Up until recently, I was, okay? I'm your vet. As we interpret law as it comes in, okay? It appears now that the Department of Agriculture is doing a little bit of this, and what they're telling us is that you need a vet available to come in and make that decision. And I respect that decision. The problem is, where are we going to get the money? Well, I actually got something up my sleeve, and so we may hire a local vet to come in versus this out-of-town gentleman that we now use, but we're not there yet. We may be a month to six weeks away.
Okay. And the other question, just very briefly, are we pretty typical about the problems that we have? You've looked around, are we, we are catching a lot of emails and flack, so to speak, but I, I'm wondering, is that, is it going around? Is it all over the state? So we're just one county out of 100 getting this type of, this type of notification by pet owners and pet lovers and that type of thing? Can you put that in perspective?
Yes, sir. I respect anyone who's an activist for their cause. May not agree with it, but it gives me something to think about that I may not have thought about. So in that sense, I'm okay with what they say. Yes, there in many other counties, I'm talking about the animal rights group. I've had phone calls from PETA as far away as Virginia, CARA, North Carolina Coalition. We respect those groups. They want something their way, and it may be a little tough now to get it because of the dollars, and I'm, I'm not recommending it. But at the same time, yes, other counties are getting it, and they're trying to resolve it in different ways. Made a trip in the spring to the Union County Health Department years ago. I was director there, know the sheriff, and he runs the program. Runs it very differently because he's the sheriff, and that's an option for us to think about, should that ever come up. I'm not, I don't make those recommendations, obviously, but yes, sir, you're not the only group. And anytime you get something like that, and I know you all got something last Christmas Day or something, and it was forwarded to me, I actually responded to that day I got back in. Again, that's activism, probably something you better get used to. I think it's going to get tougher between now and the election, and we'll do everything we can not to deflect it, because they may be saying some things you need to hear, but more to say, here's how we're trying to handle it. What I'm asking for from them and from everyone is patience, it's a virtue. Does that help you, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Any other questions? Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you sending us this squad analysis. And the weakness, inability to pay compensatory time, what's, what's, do you pay it, or do they get time off, or how does that work?
The way that, I think the county's budget ordinance works is that comp time is not paid, so right now, I'm limited to 160 hours a week. Now, if somebody works 20 more, that becomes 180, but he or she gets minus that next week.
Right.
I really need either that or my other positions filled.
Right.
And again, that's also something that we know could be pending decisions made by the Animal Control Subcommittee. If I had my druthers, Mr. Reeves, I'd love to have everything paid off this week for comp time, and in the future, let it be allowed as long as it was in, within my budget. I would request that. On the other hand, I have a lot of respect for what the county manager's going through in the balancing act he does with you, probably is a bit tougher than the one I have to do with my staff. So we're both balancing, and I respect that, Mr. Crumpton. So again, I'm, we need some money, but, you know, we're fresh out of printing presses.
Well, sometime it's better if we know what the situation is.
Yes, sir.
We can, you know, we can deal with it.
Yes, sir.
A lot easier. The second one is, and I think you just addressed it, you have, how many slots open?
When I was hired, Mr. Reeves, I was told that there were six, and one was permanently frozen, I think it's on the books. Then we got to five, and now one is open, so I've got four available. Tomorrow, for instance, I've got a person in court, so I'll have three available, of which only one or two will be in the field, because we have to have somebody at the shelter. We don't have a shelter attendant, that was one of the six. So it's, it's a juggling act.
Would that, if you hired those folks, would they have to be certified in anything?
Sir, eventually, we would want them to be, and to help with the staffing issue, we have come up with a contract, much like General Services, where we use inmates, but basically, they're limited to cleaning. That helps us get out faster in the morning.
Right.
Okay. But at the same time, if it's a day when somebody's out anyway, if there's a female at the shelter, we've got to keep two there.
Right.
They have five positions in their budget.
All right. And the last one is, as you just admitted, you're kind of filling in as a vet.
Yes, sir. Don't tell the Board of Veterinarians that.
No, no, I won't tell anybody, because I think that is a very, carries position to be in.
I agree.
And I think you ought to be doing that. I would ask that your Subcommittee and Board take up that issue as soon as you can.
Yes, sir.
I think that's important enough for us to consider right away.
Yes, sir. And that's a good point. We, we do have a vet consultant, Dr. Ralph Hauser, but we use him more to deal with the unique problems, and he orders something for us called Fail Plus. He is out of Alamance County, so he's not in the county deal. When we need services, we, we have the good services from Dr. Diane Schaller, who is your appointee to the Board of Health, and she does an excellent job. So when I say I'm the vet, not all the time, but when the call gets on the phone and we have to make a decision, we don't always call Dr. Schaller. We're going to do the best we can with what we've got at that point. I've been known to jump through some hoops on things like that, but you have to do it.
Just as a follow-up to that appointee, Mr. Hoyle, with, if that person, with the contract with the Health Department, would they have to leave their appointment position? The doctor, he says he has a...
The vet.
Dr. Schaller, who's on the, the vet member of the Board of Health, Mr. Hoyle, would she have to resign her position?
I don't really think so. She can't, she don't vote on things.
Oh, I agree with that.
The Board of Commissioners would have to do the contract, not the Board of Health, so she would not be voting on her own contract.
Correct. Right, yeah, we know of you.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Howard, have you thought about, or have you talked with your board about possibly contracting, or just setting something up with CCCC and their vet tech school as some kind of internship?
Yes, sir.
So that, you know, you can get free labor, labor out of them. Yeah, basically, we're, that's what it is. I mean, if they can get class hours out of, out of helping out at the shelter, you know, as being built into the program, it would do tremendous, you know, you'd have a ongoing, maybe somebody that stays there and helps, you know, during the day while your people can get out and actually do the, you know, the calls.
Yes, sir, we have thought about that, and I would love to, a vet tech, when I was here about six months, Mr. Crumpton graciously took me out there one day, interviewed, and we talked with the president, and we went and viewed that program. I talked to the person who heads it up, and basically, what I was told, with all due respect to your question, was no. What we can do is bring on an intern in their last semester, pay that intern, and then they would work with us. I was looking for free labor too.
They said no?
They said no. We, we get intern help.
They said no.
Pardon?
At State Home, maybe?
I don't know. Or maybe what, what, one of the reasons too, Ms. Al Rimpel, is nobody wants to go into shelter management, they want to work with vets. We have a good history of working with students. We have nurses from Chapel Hill, School of Pharmacy. At one point this past semester, we had six different students on both the undergraduate and the graduate level. We will work with them. I will sign those agreements, they don't cost us anything, and they do worthwhile projects. We just have not been able to work this one out.
Have you been to the Board of Trustees for the presentation?
No, sir.
Were you considered doing that?
Yes.
That's where you need to start.
Own job training.
Yes, sir.
I mean, education.
It should be built into the program. I don't see why that should be a problem for, for CCCC.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very much.
Or if there's any questions on the Subcommittee, Mr. Cole is here, and I'd be glad to answer you.
And meanwhile, I'd like for you to approach our appointee about a possible contract, if that person would be here.
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to do it. We've actually had some informal discussion, but we're walking through it very carefully because we wanted the legal opinion to make sure.
I agree, and I want to make sure that we did the procurement in the proper way, but I think we got to start somewhere.
Yes, sir.
And take you out of that.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Cole, would you care to have anything to say about the Subcommittee work or the date? That's what I'm most interested in, when, when we'll expect to, you know?
I know it's a, it's been a long time. Feel strange coming back. Appreciate you letting me be here tonight, and I've enjoyed the work on the Subcommittee. It has been a, it has been a challenge, but before I say anything else, I've dealt with a lot of positions in Lee County government, and there's nothing more mental-stressing than animal control. I've seen it, I've visited six counties, and I'm seeing the same issues everywhere I go. It's a very, very mental-stressing job, and, and there's days that I, like I said, I've been to six counties and I don't want to go back anymore. I've been to Pender County and to Cumberland, New Hanover. Everybody goes to the same problems, they went through it years ago, and I think it's Lee County's term is what it is. But, you know, it, it shelters, they just have a bad rap for mass euthanasia. And, and it's like Mr. Cerberus said, there's no room for it. And, you know, there's issues with spanier programs. I mean, that's something that's being looked at across the state, but, you know, as far as a committee, you know, we may not come up with the best, best ordinance, but at least hopefully be better than what we have. I think it's going to always be an ever-changing thing with your animal groups involved, and, you know, in the end result, we're all after the same thing, it's the welfare of the animals. And, you know, on the government side, we have to look at the cost issues, but it's, it's been a very rewarding challenge, but also very stressing, and I can't, we've got five committee members, Dr. Schaller, Dr. Kelly Fogg, Kim Guton with CARA, myself, and Commissioner Odom. And, you know, originally, we were trying to get it turned out pretty quickly, and we had some busy time in there, so we're actually meeting twice a week, we started meeting once a month. But I am aware of this board's urgency to go ahead and wrap things up, and hopefully we should have something out in September, so at least a good shot at it and, and being good ordinance.
Very good, thank you. Any questions?
What's the cost of the spay and neutering in Lee County compared to other counties?
That is probably the most varying program I've seen. You can go to New Hanover, and they have a complex spay-neuter program. You can have, a lot of them actually, you have to be a qualifying family, they'll actually, the counties will budget so much for spay-neuter program, and then you have to be a qualifying family, get a voucher, I mean, there's various ways to do it.
It costs dollars. How much would DQ Public pay in, in Lee County?
I'm not sure. Lee County, you know, it could be as, like in New Hanover, they have a vet that they're on staff, you know, it's a whole lot more cheaper than we could do it. But, you know, and the cost of it, you know, is, is, I wouldn't say we're a whole lot different. Like I said, there's, there's, it's all over the state, I mean, you can't...
Well, sir.
Yes, sir. Interrupt for a second. I think the range in this area, and this is approximate, maybe 125 to 300, and when a person comes to adopt an animal, they're required to get, to pay the vet, then come back, and they pick up the animals, and, you know, that kind of thing, so.
125 to 300?
Depends on the vet, yes, sir.
I can see why. The size.
Yes, sir, and, and we don't set that fee, that's...
No, I, I realize that, and that's why I was asking, because I've heard of other counties who already work things out in advance and get a much cheaper rate. I'm wondering if we have looked into that, is all I'm asking. I can understand why families would not rush out to, to adopt a dog, that kind of call.
And I guess the, the best spay-neuter program is free, but you're not going to find it.[1779.13] You know, it is expensive here, but there, there's different ways counties are handling it, so.
Moore County has a, has a new program down there, 18 months to two years.
I think they use the snap clinic or something and other bubble unit comes around.
That's certainly an area your committee ought to investigate, start at Moore County. All right.
I've actually visited Moore, Harnett, Chatham, New Hanover, Pender, and Cumberland. And like I said, animal control issues are the same. You can walk into a 30,000 square foot facility and see the same stress on the people working there as you do if you come here, if you're not.
Larger scale.
It's just a larger scale.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, I, I appreciate what the service and staff are doing, and I hope this board will be patient and give this subcommittee time to complete this work they're working on. I think it's going to be worthwhile.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Uh, the next item is Item D. It's time for us to approve the budget ordinance for 2010 and 11, and that material is before you, and I'd like to set that in motion by making the motion that the, that the budget be approved as we have it before us. Oh, I may go too.
You want to take a five-minute recess?
Yes, I think we'll take a five-minute recess.
That's a good idea.
But. So equitable. Any other questions? If not, I would call for a vote on the budget. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
One person is in opposition. Thank you very much. And now we consider the twenty or two thousand ten eleven capital improvements project ordinance. Is there a motion that it be approved? It's been moved that the capital improvements project ordinance be approved. Are there any questions or comments before we vote?
John, the five million for the. Find this. For the Lee County Industrial Park. Now, on the explanation, you know, it said water sewer roads, but did you not tell us during a joint session or work session that part of this was purchasing land?
Yes, ma'am. It wasn't in the detail, but it was supposed to be in there.
Since we can not really do this, and this is just a planning document, I don't. Can't see not voting for this, but I'm not in support of the county getting into the land business.
I think they have under option one hundred and eighty acres. Somewhere, somewhere, somewhere in that area. But if you remember from the discussion that we had, I think. I think there was more interest in trying to help private developers develop industrial parks than us own our own property. I don't know if they're sellable or not. Haven't seen the contracts.
Do you know if our options are sellable?
They're not our options. They're with the Lee County Economic Development Corporation.
Their options are sellable. Can they be sold?
Can they be sold?
Well, they can't be bought unless the county buys them, so.
No, I'm saying so.
No, I understand.
Can the options be sold to a third party? Can you look into that?
Any other questions?
On the capital improvement, John, with the nine one one bill getting unanimous report from that House committee, I think there was a provision in it that there's a one-time provision that we could use up to fifty percent of the reserves for any public safety need. Do we know how much we're talking about in that fifty percent reserves?
I had just asked Lisa about it about a month ago, and we were a little over a million. So it'd be around five hundred thousand.
So that could take care of the Lee County Emergency Ops and.
It could help greatly.
Walkie talkies or whatever for all of the volunteer fire guys that have to upgrade all of that. So there'd be money to do that.
We have some money for public safety, yes, ma'am. If that bill passes.
That's. You think they'd try to latch onto that like they're taking the lottery funds?
No.
You never know.
That's coming.
It's in our possession. That money's in our possession, so I don't think they would do that. I'm, you know, that's still, the legislation still needs to be passed. And right now, there's, there's not, there isn't any opposition, but.
It'll be tomorrow or Thursday is what we were told.
But they're voting on it?
Is that what you heard as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Tomorrow, Thursday. It looks good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we vote? If not, I'd like to ask for a vote on the capital improvements project ordinance as we have it before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? No opposition, thank you very much. Item F, under our agenda, has to do with the appointment to boards and commissions for two thousand ten to eleven. Been provided with, oh, this is Lee.
No, go ahead.
No, well, Mrs. Lee has provided us with ballots so that we, due to the large number, fortunately, of people who have applied for many of these positions, to allow us to do this with the minimum distraction in time. Would you care to add to that, ma'am?
The only thing I need to mention is on the fire advisory board, your sheet shows that there are three vacancies, which there are, but one of those is from, needs to come from the business sector. And I do not have an application yet for anyone from the business sector, so you will only be voting for two tonight.
And is there some indication that there is someone? Let me put it this way, any positions that are not filled, if there were not enough applicants, or if there's someone in the wing waiting, we can go back and advertise again this next month in order to complete, complete the boards. So this is sort of our first grand pass at it as we're duty bound to do. But where we have holes that need to be filled, we'll follow up and we'll push as hard as we can to get those completed next month or the month thereafter.
And if you will also notice on page four, there's a list of individuals that have applied for several boards. Just please keep in mind, per your policy, that person can only serve on two boards. And I tried to make notes here to let you know if they're already serving on a board or how many boards they've asked to be considered for.
So again, fellow commissioners, one can only serve on two boards, and our policy that was passed this past year also states that one can serve only two three-year terms unless stipulated by the, what, the state or some other overriding authority, but.
Categorical positions.
Yes, sir. That's right.
I thought it was two terms. What if it's a four-year term?
Then it would be two four-year.
Well, if it's, if it's county appointed.
Yeah.
Because we changed that. We wanted to make sure that it's a good time for service, but an opportunity to bring new people in. And again, we've been really blessed with a lot, we've put a lot of effort into it. We've gotten a lot of people to wish to become part of these boards, so it's been a good bounty, and thank you. Now, you would be taking these up. What's the procedure?
Let me ask you about the fire advisory board. So the fire department slot you have listed on there, we're not voting on that slot?
Yes, you're voting on that slot and the one from the general public.
Okay, and so the fire chief's rep, the same person is going to, so we don't need to vote for Larry?
Well, if you want to reappoint him. Mr. Kelly is the fire chief's rep's recommendation. We have another individual that has also applied for the fire department slot, although that person.
Aren't there two separate ones for, one for the fire department and one that represents the fire chiefs?
Yes, but the only one that is vacant is the fire chief's rep.
Not the fire department slot.
That will come out till next time.
Everybody will let Mrs. Lee have their ballots signed, please, and then you will, what?
I will tally everything.
Tonight, before the meeting is completed, okay.
This is everyone. Staple name.
Okay, now.
And then we got one more.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was trying to remember if we got the applications early.
I gave those to you at the last meeting.
Not, not early at the last, yeah.
Okay, while we're waiting for that, may we move to the manager's report? And Mrs. Minter, would you speak to it?
Yes, sir. In your package, you have the May financial report. As you'll see in the notes there, we are still well ahead on collections in the tax department. We're at a hundred and three point five seven percent versus a hundred and one point one nine last year. We are still running behind though on some other revenues, the most significant being investment earnings. We'd love to see a turnaround on investment rates, but it just doesn't seem to be happening very quickly. So we have adjusted that number quite a bit for next year. At this point, we are looking at ninety one point six seven percent is the benchmark for expenditures, and only two departments exceed that at this time, one being planning, which is a quarterly appropriation to the city, so that was to be expected. And CCCC for the capital outlay related to the WB Wicker site and the pods there is completely paid out due to reimbursement of expenses. Glad to entertain any questions about that report, if there are any.
Question?
You also have before you the sales tax report for collections through March. As you can see, the numbers were back up a little bit from February, and we are roughly around seventy three to seventy five percent collected for the revised budget numbers or revised projection. No questions on that? I do have an additional budget amendment that I need to pass out to you and ask that you approve. This. This comes around to you, I'll go ahead and try to walk you through it. Social services received after the agenda deadline, an additional appropriation from the Energy Neighbor Program of four hundred and eighty-four dollars. I did discuss with them their ability to spend that prior to June thirtieth, and they felt like they could, so we wanted to go ahead and get that on the books. And then in addition, we are moving money in for the industrial park, the contract that you approved this evening. We needed to allocate an additional forty seven thousand four hundred dollars to that budget. Several years ago, we put money aside for the make peace facility where community development is housed to do some renovations and all there. That has been at a standstill, waiting for some other decisions to be made. So we are taking forty seven thousand four hundred dollars from that fund and moving it to the industrial park to be able to cover the contract costs that you approved today. So I ask that you consider that for approval.
I need.
Go ahead.
If you back up a second and take me through that one again, this is for capital projects, where?
The money we're moving is the forty seven thousand four hundred is coming from a project that we had set up several years ago for the potential of enlarging or renovating the make peace facilities where community development is housed. And we're moving it to the industrial park to cover the cost of the contract that you approved tonight for the stream repair and restoration.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I just said industrial park. I should have specified what you were doing at the industrial park. No.
We're not exercising any options.
No, strictly for the contract that you approved tonight. There is not enough money in that project to exercising any of that right now.
Any other questions? Okay, let's, why don't we vote on that amendment? Move that we approve it, as all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now to the, Mr. Crumpton, did you have something you'd like to say as a part of the manager's report?
Just to remind everybody, we're not meeting again until July nineteenth. I'm looking at Mrs. Lee, she's still tallying, I can't remember what time that is, but.
It's calendared for six P.M. And there was some discussion between some of us about, just wanted to make sure that that pleased the members as opposed to three. There was one, I recall, I thought I did, three, in the three summer meetings, three o'clock, six o'clock and three, but apparently it was others felt that they heard six, three, and six. That is twice we'd meet at six and the middle month we'd meet at three. So I think it is six, three, and six right now. Shall we leave it that way?
Let's go three, six, thirty.
Sir?
Let's go three, six, three.
Three, six, three, I hear three, six, three.
Do you anticipate an agenda with a lot of items on it for July?
I'm gonna try not to.
Budget amendments already?
Yes.
Yes.
There may be a public hearing planning for July.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, mine's back on the agenda.
Well, and another thing to consider too is when we meet, I mean, the third Monday in everybody's mind is our six o'clock meeting. You know?
I don't make that.
I think for six o'clock, you know, the six o'clock was for public hearing, if there was a potential for it, so I think that's. I mean, you could have a public hearing at three, but you're not gonna have the turnout that you would at six.
Okay, so let me just put it this way, all in, generally, all in favor of the three, six, and three, please.
But if the public hearing is at our July meeting.
It's gonna be six, three, and six.
Let's just show it on the July meeting right now.
July meeting, all in favor of the July meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, just the way it's printed. Okay, then the August meeting would be at three, and then the September meeting would be at six. Three thirty?
See if we have any public hearings. As we get closer.
Okay, very good. Commissioners' comments. Mr. Pascal, would you have something?
What I do to LA, how's our water line coming, Mr. Pascal?
Mr. Pascal, we need to set up that meeting with the neighbors, and we have a date we would like to do it. I need to get with you about getting the church.
How much money are you short right now? Don't tell me all of it.
We don't know really if we got more than rent, more coverage, but I don't think we'd use it all.
No, sir, it's, we still have to match twenty-five percent. Depends on the estimates, maybe forty, fifty thousand.
Sanford does any engineering or something, they can count that as any kind.
Yes, sir.
Right park.
Mrs. Shook?
Just a question, what's NCACC doing on S thirty-one ninety-four? Because it looks like it's gonna crop back up its ugly head on the Senate floor for a vote this week. That's the collective bargaining thing.
Collective bargaining? I know that NACO's actually, you know, been real active in trying to oppose that, and so has.
I did see ACC.
But I hadn't heard.
Last I heard, Hagan has maybe changed her position on it. She opposed it last time, but what I'm seeing is she's maybe there, so. And the other thing is, you know, we'd started once upon a time to review all of our inter-local government agreements. I know you've been working with Hal on some of these. Do we have a timeframe maybe for tackling some of these or reviewing them?
I did not have a timeframe, but I do have that as one of the items I needed to do. We have fourteen agreements with the city, need to go through every one of them.
Those are written ones?
Yes, ma'am, and then we have some that aren't.
I know, that's what I'm concerned about, okay.
But, but you are going to make that a, you're gonna feature that across the next three months or so?
Yes, sir.
And talk to us about it, okay. Mrs. Dallas?
Along with what Mrs. Shook said with the NCACC, we had the board meeting this past week. There is gonna be a lot of legislation being looked at this week, particularly Tuesday and Thursday, that's gonna really impact our county.
At the state level?
Mm-hmm, so on your emails, if you get the NCACC legislative alerts, give, pay attention to them and act on them, please, because I know the big discussion was the state lottery funds.
I was gonna ask, what's the very latest? Has there been any news?
Well, yes, there, well, not, I haven't heard today, but as of Saturday about eleven o'clock, the discussion was, and hopefully, Mr. Crumpton will make sure I'm getting this right, the Senate proposal is to leave the pot of money the same, but the distribution will be different and will cost our county about two hundred and two thousand dollars?
Two-ten.
Two-ten, okay, two-ten.
I was talking to Mr. Love last night about that.
And then the House.
He says it looks like it's gonna be left alone.
Well, well, but there's, that was the discussion was, there's, if it's left alone and the pot of money stays the same, the distribution still may change, which might cost us money.
It's the distribution.
That's the distribution.
The distribution is the, that's the sticking point. Then the House bill, oh, I should have brought my numbers. The House bill lowers it to about a hundred and seventy-eight million. I know, but the House bill, you know, chops it down, but keeps the distribution the same. And then the Conferes even takes more money away. So they're gonna be back and forth during this week, so that's why it's critical that we stay on top of that this week.
Are they, are they trying to get this done? I mean, is it likely that they'll be finished by the end of June? Is that what they're?
That's what they think. Well, the, the, the association felt like if they're not finished in, in the next week or so, they're gonna be there all summer. Is that fair to say, Mr. Reeves?
Well, I, I really don't know. What I was listening to and thinking about is which side of the corn should we be positioning ourselves? If they lower the money and keep the distribution the same.
Right.
Is that better for us, or?
Well, that's what I was gonna get with Ms. Minter about tomorrow, because, you know, just getting the information Saturday and getting back into town and tied up today, but, but that's, that's something hopefully she'll help me with tomorrow, is to see which will be better for our county.
Well, yeah, I think that's the bottom line for me.
That's right.
I'm not taking a step just because the association said this is a good thing.
Absolutely, that's right.
You gotta look out for Lee County.
That's right. That's right. But, but that is, that's the one thing that they kept hammering to us, is even though the dollars may stay the same, like we just said, we still could stand to lose a lot of money. It might work better, you know, for one of the other options, lowering the money, but it wouldn't bother us as much.
Okay, well, just a comment, as just one commissioner, I ask that Mr. Love and Mr. Antwater to leave the money alone and leave the distribution alone.
That would be nice.
Leave it as it is. No, I was very serious about it.
I know, I know.
You know, we will see, but, so that's, that's my.
That's the ideal situation, but quite frankly, if we don't take a position on which one helps us the most, you don't give them anything to work. They have to give them much.
Something's gonna change.
You think they will listen to us? Wow. You, you put this in a good position for them not to. Working on that.
Well, the, the E nine one thing, I think has been successful. From the commissioners being involved and county managers being involved and law enforcement and fire and rescue being involved, that bill looks like it's hopefully a done deal this week.
I think, yeah, I think the big issue with the state budget though is the, is the five hundred million only.
That they can.
That's right.
And that's really what the stall is right now. And if they lose the five hundred billion, all, all the bets are off, because they're gonna have to scramble like crazy. And, you know, at that point, you know, try to protect our turf, but we're, I guarantee you, they're gonna come to us to help them. They either go up to get the bail out, or they're going down to get the bail out. Doesn't matter, they're going somewhere, up or down.
There's nobody, either place.
Well, they could, they could take both positions. I just think we have to sit in here and decide which position is best for this county. Pass that on to our legislative delegation, and then they've got something to work with. I don't wanna leave it in their hand. Well, we need a recommendation, I suppose, don't we? Uh, we need to know what.
Ask that to you, John?
I'll be happy to look into it tomorrow.
Mr. Oden? Talked enough. Mr. Kelly?
Um, just, when you're talking about inter-local agreements, just go ahead and add the water sewer in there. With how, figure out how we can figure out something.
Well, I think we need to.
Without annexation.
We need to nail down how we're gonna extend water out into the county. Because really, since we sold the system, there hasn't been any extensions out into the county. Not without annexation.
With this grant and capital bill deal and stuff like that, it's coming, and we better get ahead of it before it's on the title of way.
I agree.
Mr. Reeves?
Two things, at the next meeting, whether it's six or three, ask them if they'll give us an update on the Brookhaven problem. And lastly, tomorrow's Tuesday, don't forget to vote. Have a good evening.
Very good.
What would you adjourn? Mrs. Lee, are we waiting? Ready to send smoke up the chimney?
She knows.
Is it white smoke?
She knows.
Yeah. Well, just do, do what you need to do, we will hold. Could you use some help, you know? Oh, all right.
Oh, waiting, a little bit of trivia, you know, they, this came from the Charlotte Business Journal, where it said the North Carolina jobless rate dips to ten point three percent. What's interesting is government sector jobs were gained sixteen thousand one hundred, professional and business services only sixteen hundred, trade, transportation, utility thirteen hundred. Largest decreases took place in manufacturing was lost point nine hundred, and leisure and hospitality was lost point seven hundred. So of that ten point three percent decline, most of that went to increased government jobs.
Wasn't local jobs. Wasn't local jobs.
Somebody's gonna figure out sometime that we gotta have some private sector money going in to feed this government beast.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, on the agricultural advisory board, you had six vacancies. Donald Nicholson, Ed Angel, George Watson, Jane Behringer, Tony Reagan, and A.K. Griffin. The EDC board, you had two vacancies, Donnie Odom and David Nestor. The Central Carolina Community College Board of Trustees, one vacancy, Julian Philpott. Fire advisory board, Worth Pickford for the general public position, and Larry Kelly from the Fire Chiefs Association. The cemetery board, there's five vacancies, you only had three applications, Patrick Kelly, I don't know how to pronounce that, Bland, Kiesha Bland, and Molly Whitaker. The Board of Health, there's five vacancies, Dr. David Fisher, dentist, Dr. William Hall, medical doctor, Tamara Brogan, general public, Charles Clifford, pharmacist, and Steve Brewer, general public. The library board, three vacancies, Charles Sutherland, Edgar Underwood, and Tamara Brogan. Mid-Carolina Workforce, which is now the Triangle South Local Development, two vacancies, Toni Leett and Sharice Williams. Parks and Rec, let's see, Butch Saunders. Moved Justin Coggins, the first alternate into a regular position, then moved the second alternate, Mark Klein, into the first alternate position, and Keith Clark into the second alternate position. Lee County Planning Board, you have five vacancies, Roy Cox, Herman Morris, Kathy Waddell, Chuck Heiser, and Tamara Brogan. But we have a problem here, because Tamara's already been put on two boards, so I guess I'll get with her tomorrow and see which boards she wants to be on. Is that, you think that's okay?
Yeah, she's second.
I'll get me the announcement. Okay, all right, I didn't know if you were still here or not, I'm sorry. The Sanford Planning Board, one vacancy, Bill Norris. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, two vacancies, Patrick Kelly and Denise Pulley. Senior Services Advisory Board, three vacancies, Brenda Ingram, Janet Thasek, and Denise Pulley. We have another problem there, because Ms. Pulley is already on one board, and you've put her on two more, so I'll have to get with her and see which one she wants to go on. Rest Home and Nursing Home Advisory Board, nine vacancies, let me count this one just a second. Okay, Dolores Jenkins, Teresa Howard, Ismael Rivera, Carol Philbin, Elaine Cook, Betty Lou Godfrey, Vera Cothran, Fran Edmonds, and Bobby Hurley. The Senior Services Advisory Board, no, I've already done that one. Industrial Facilities, Richard Huff. And Colts Transportation Board, Fenton Wells. So any that we didn't fill, I will get with the Sanford Herald, we'll run another ad and try to take care of those at the July meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.